Seven o'clock, March 18th. Call the regular medium, the Waverly City Council order. Roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here.
Kangas.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Raffi.
Here.
Chair.
Here.
Waltstein.
Here.
And Ray Cowan Zepson.
Ray Cowan Zepson, welcome back. Our guest council person for the month of March, Danny Houghgan. And hopefully you took some stay awake pills before the game tonight. We'll go from there. Very good. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Move the agenda.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve the agenda. Any comments? All those in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes for February 25th, 2019, study session minutes. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the February 25th minutes.
Second. Motion made in seconded. Any council discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? February 25th study session minutes are approved. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing for the Waverly Senior Housing Project 2019. Mayor and city council want to entertain any comments from the visiting public. Are there -- I will open the public hearing. Any written or oral comments?
There are none, your honor.
Very good. Anyone in the audience that cares to speak to this project? The none of closed public hearing. Entertain a motion for approval of Resolution 1941. This is Waverly Senior Housing Project.
I will move approval of Resolution 1941 approving plans, specification, form of contract, and estimate cost of $1,959,250 for the Waverly Senior Housing Project 2019.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. For those of you that are wondering about where your tax money's going to go, this is not coming out of tax money. It's paid for by the Waverly Housing Group. They have funds set aside for this. It's been coming for quite some time, so just to make sure that you understand that it's not a taxpayer project. Any other council discussion? Questions? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
And Waltstein.
Yes.
Resolution 1941 approving plans, specifications, form of contract is approved. Resolution 1942, a resolution awarding the contract for the Waverly Senior Housing Project 2019. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-42 awarding the contract for the Waverly Senior Housing Project 2019 to stegy construction of Waverly, Iowa for the bid amount of $1,804,950.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution 19-42 awarding the contract for the Waverly Senior Housing to stegy construction is approved. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the proposed 2019 Community Development Block Grant Housing Fund grant application. I would open the public hear -- any written or oral comments, Carla?
There are none, your honor.
Thank you. I would open the public hearing.
All right. Good evening. This is Brian Schoen with the Intercog office. And bear with me, I've got to read a number of items into the record here, and I'll try and get -- okay. Bill, if you want to help me there. There we go. While we're getting that up to speed, again, this is a resubmital of the block grant application that you sent in the first week in May last year. And you've got handouts, I think, at all of your positions. And I've got copies here of about 25 more, should anybody want. And I'll run through the notes then relatively quick, but I've got to run through the notes and make sure that the record reflects that we've covered a lot of the items that are in the handouts. Again, we're going to resubmit this to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for six housing units. Again, the target area is shown there. What you're looking at in the southwest corner is Sixth Street Northwest and Third, and it traverses up to the rail right away and then comes back. There's about 78 homes, I think, in that particular target area. It's the same target area that we submitted last year. And so we've got the income and the condition portions of the application completed. The need for the project, again, was identified through using the same target area and the same needs assessment that was done a year ago. Obviously, the city of Waverly has performed a number of different studies, whether they be related to flooding, whether they be related to housing. You've got a housing analysis that was done in 2014, a number of different documents, comprehensive land use plan, a couple of other things as well that identify need. The target area then was drawn from an area that was pulled back from the floodplain as a result of the projects and the redrawing of the floodplain boundaries. And the amount of money that the city is looking to apply is $245,994. At this point in time, the city is planning to entertain a resolution for $15,000 in match, so you're going to ask for $230,000 of that $245,000. Again, the primarily -- primary expense is the construction portion of the project. And there are several expenses that we have to plan for, like lead-based paint and lead-based reduction throughout the budget. So as you look at the dollars down below, you'll see how those break out. Again, a lot of those figures are set by HUD or set by the Iowa Economic Development Authority in terms of max as we move forward. No one will be displaced, so I'm really on the second page. No one will be displaced unless we find lead-based paint in any of the structures that we are rehabilitating, in which case then we'll have to relocate people that are in those structures. And that is built into the budget. There are dollars there for relocation for those particular households. The application is due on May 4th of 2019. That's a Saturday. They backed it up actually a week when they were bumping the date. For whatever reason, they added an extra date, but be that as it may, it is due the first week in May. And in terms of the community needs, obviously, the city has a number of things that it can look at, whether it be sanitary sewer, whether it be housing rehab. Again, you're just got done with a public hearing for a particular housing project, so that's of note as well. And then also, there are certainly other needs that are identified there, whether they be for seniors, whether they be for rental. Again, there are a number of other different community development projects that are identified there. The focus of tonight's hearing is really just the rehab application and moving that forward. Again, our staff is working on that, working with your staff, like we did last year, in order to resubmit that application. We're going to tweak and tighten some of the language, make sure that we've got those things involved. And then obviously, you've got a resolution, a couple resolutions in front of you, one of which is then pledging $15,000 as match then towards those particular six homes. Again, the six homes haven't been selected, haven't been identified. We're just prequalifying people so that we can build a pool saying there's need in the target area. And then from there, full applications will be done if the city's awarded dollars. Timeline, again, due first part of May. We expect that, like last year, they'll make awards middle of July, middle of August, somewhere in that window, with the idea being that we'll have trainings that we'll have to go to for awarded recipients, workshops, those kinds of things. And so technically, in terms of those dollars that the city is considering pledging, those will go towards construction, and those dollars will not need to be readily available until probably about a year from now for awarded. So we'll spend winter doing paperwork, and obviously, we don't do much work on homes outside in the winter unless it's a nice winter. And so be that as it may, that's kind of how things line up in terms of the public hearings. And I'll sit, and if there are other questions or comments, and we'll go from there.
Just stand tight a minute, Brian, if you will.
I will.
Any other comments from the part of the public hearing? The none of closed public hearing. Entertain a motion for Resolution 1943.
I will move approval of Resolution 1943 approving a community development block grant application designating the mayor as the official representative of the city and authorizing the mayor to affix their signature to said application and certain assurances in conjunction with same.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Council discussion. Questions for Brian at this point?
So my only question is kind of a basic one. So we have all of these things put into the budget for, say, temporary relocation and lead hazard. If those funds aren't necessary, they were returned to the Iowa Economic Development Authority?
Or potentially, we try to pick up a seventh home
Okay.
in the process. So if we get things done quickly enough and there's still time left in the contract, then we'll try and work on a seventh or an eighth home if possible.
Excellent.
Very good.
So Brian, what are the criteria that are used to select the six that will get the funding? And what do you do with all of the folks who are disappointed?
What we'll do is we'll open it up to applications, and so there'll be applications. We then will do income verifications, and that'll take a significant amount of time because we will look at all the sources of income, not just tax returns, but we do actually pull bank accounts and those kinds of things. And then we've got an inspector, actually, that'll come in and help us assess then the needs by unit. And in some cases, there may be too much need in a particular unit that we have to pass, meaning that that $24,999 figure may not be enough in order to bring it up to housing quality standards. And so between the income and the needs of the particular unit, those things kind of help us sort it out.
Thank you.
Any other discussion questions for Brian? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, for your input. Any other questions that enter? Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Resolution 19-43 approving the CDB grant application is approved. Resolution 19-44, resolution adopting an administrative plan for the city of Waverly Housing Rehabilitation Program. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-44 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Resolution 1944, council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 1944 is approved. Resolution 19-45, a resolution granting the Iowa Economic Development Authority certain assurances in conjunction with the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Housing Application. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 1945 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Council discussion.
Can I fully support this and support our participation in this particular resolution, but it just seems counterproductive. It's beginning to be a pay-for-play type thing where if a community doesn't or can't afford to match some of the funds, they're being excluded from the process. I know we have no say in that, but it just seems like it's setting a bad example.
Any other council comments, discussion?
I'll just say, I'm not sure. I don't know the history of what these grants used to require, but, you know, there are many grants that require some sort of contribution on the part of the grantee.
I know at some point in time, not everybody was putting in some kind of a fund for matching. It seems like this round, that is a very common thing you're seeing. So it really depends on what the rest of the pool is doing as well, or what you're seeing in the application process. Because as noted, we didn't do this last time, missed it by a point. We thought it would benefit us to maybe be one of the few that did, and now everybody's putting it in. So I agree to an extent with what you're saying, Dan. You know, do you up it, up it, up it, hoping to convince them that you're more deserving? Should you put more in? Or does it go to simply other items that are looked at more favorably for certain cities and size of their LMI, et cetera? So I'm not sure how much the money will play into their decision, but I guess since the field is mostly doing this, we're trying to at least stay even with what's expected, depending on the people looking at the grant applications.
I mean, I completely understand what Edie is saying, but at least what there is a requirement to a match is spelled out in the application process where it isn't here.
Right.
If that's the future, then I think they need to adjust their program to call it out so that everybody can be treated fairly.
I would agree.
Any other comments, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
And Raffi.
Yes.
Resolution 1945 granting certain assurances to the Iowa Economic Development Authority is approved. Thank you. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the proposed amendment number four to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Waverly. I'll open a public hearing. Any written or oral comments?
There are none.
Very good. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to the amendment number four to the urban renewal Closed public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-40, resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects, and adopting amendment number four to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Resolution 19-40, having to do with Urban Renewal Amendment Number Four is approved. First reading of ordinance 1060, amending the current Waverly TIF ordinance 1053 in conjunction with the adoption of amendment number four to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan. Entertain a motion.
Move approval of Resolution, ordinance number 1060, as read by the mayor.
Motion made in seconded. Council discussion.
I do want to thank the city staff for the information session we had, learning all about TIF, so that for us, these documents make a whole lot more sense.
Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Ordinance 1060 is hereby approved. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing for the Slurry Seal Program Project 2019, plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. Any written or oral comments?
There are none, your honor.
Open the public hearing. Anyone wishes to speak to our street program? Closed public hearing. Counsel, entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 1946 approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate cost of $56,000 for the Slurry Seal Program 2019 project.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Council discussion.
I just had a question about, it says a parking lot, First Avenue Southeast. Is that the one behind the cobblestone or?
Yes, the big one.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution 1946 approving plans, specifications, and estimated cost is approved. Resolution 19-47, a resolution awarding contract for the Slurry Seal Program 2019 project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-47, awarding contract for the Slurry Seal Program 2019 project to Farmer Asphalt Sealers of Dubuque, Iowa for the bid amount of $50,483.70.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve Resolution 1947. Council discussion. Questions? Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Resolution 1947 awarding contract for the project to Farmer Asphalt Sealers of Dubuque, Iowa. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing for the Batumina Seal Coat Program 2019, project plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. I would open the public hearing. Any oral or written comments, Carla?
So are not, your honor.
Very good. Anyone wishing to speak to that? Closed public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 1948 approving plans, specification, and form of contract, and estimate cost of $113,000 for the Batumina Seal Coat Program 2019 project.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Council discussion.
So Mike, is this in any certain part of town, or just sort of spread all over, depending on where the need is?
The seal coating community is divided into seven districts, and we do one district each year. So seal coating always follows the sidewalk districts. So we did District One last year, which is southwest, and that will be the area that is seal coated.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 1948 approving specifications, plans, form of contract, and estimated cost is hereby approved. Resolution 19-49, a resolution awarding contract for the Batumina Seal Coat Program 2019 project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 1949 awarding the contract for the Batumina Seal Coat Program 2019 project to Blacktop Services of Humboldt, Iowa for the bid amount of $107,872.70.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Resolution 19-49 awarding Batumina Seal Coat Project to Blacktop Services of Humboldt, Iowa is approved. Time for public comments for any item that is not on the agenda.
Pete Lamb, Waverly, Iowa. Not really a comment, just a reminder, if you've seen, there's going to be a Planning and Zoning Extension Service Program, April 18th. For anybody that hasn't been there, come on. It's for elected officials, administrative staff, board members of planning and zoning, and Board of Adjustments. It's a very good program, and I would highly recommend it to anybody. Comprehensive land use plans get covered, as well as how the boards and commissions function.
Very good. Thank you, Pete. Anyone else in the audience have anything that they would like to comment on, items not on the agenda?
Darrell Burris, from 1038 Third Avenue Northeast in Waverly here. Folks don't know, that's in the fourth section up there. We're right next to Dean. I'm here, last year, we had a, they made an ordinance to open up the city streets for golf carts. And, well, actually, what the deal started out with, two weeks before they'd done that, I sold my golf cart. And after I sold it, they opened it up where you could start driving your golf carts on city streets in Waverly here. So I thought, okay, I bought myself another golf cart. And then I went down to the police station, and I asked him what the rules was for the driving on the streets and that. And I was told by an officer that it was, any street was open in Waverly except Main Street and Fourth Street South on here. If I'm correct, is that right? And then I asked him about crossing, crossing these streets and that, and they said that if you go directly across, that was legal to drive directly across. And so then I told him, remember, I live up in northeast Waverly and that, so I thought then I can come down and drive across the bridge out here, the walking bridge, trail bridge, whatever you want to call it. And I was sold, no, that was illegal. And then I thought, well, the fire department was here, and they opened it up for a special deal where golf carts could drive across the bridge and that. And then I got to thinking, well, in that week's time, there's more golf carts that went across that bridge in that week's time than I will in my lifetime down there. And so I come up with a deal, how do I get across town? I asked them how I got to get across town, and they told me that the only way I could get across town was to go out here, what we call Lover's Lane, up that street, cross the deal, and come in town from that way. And I thought, well, I suppose that's the only thing I could do, because that was the only way I could get across the other side of town and that. Well, then I could read the Waverly paper here a while back, the first thing that they're going to get started in Waverly is a resurfaced bridge out here where I'm supposed to drive across. So that's going to be shut down. And then I thought, well, you know, that shouldn't take that long, that shouldn't take that long to resurface that bridge. And then the next week, the paper comes out and says, when they get that bridge resurfaced, they're going to work on Lover's Lane. So I'm here to ask tonight how to ask tonight, how am I supposed to get across town with my golf cart? And if the council, and I don't know who makes these rules up, if the council makes these rules up, if they would consider opening up that railroad bridge again for at least that length of time or forever, at least so the people on the east side of town can get to the west side of town. And I, you know, there probably isn't that many up there that wouldn't want to do that. And I don't know why anybody on the west side of town would want to go on the east side of town. And there may be some reason, but I would like to, during this time, I'd like to take my golf cart down and go down to the WAVP or over to get a Dairy Queen or anything. And I'm just wondering, how am I supposed to do that in that length of time? And I just wondered if the council would give some consideration of opening up the railroad bridge or the bike trail up for, actually permanently. That would save a lot of time, me driving clear out of town and the other people on the east end of town to cross the railroad bridge. So, that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Darrell. You bet. Carol? We'll put that in some officials' hands and see what we can come up with. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent calendar. Consists of eight items. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the Adams Parkway Bridge and Horton Road repairs 2019 for the amount of $1,220.60. Pay request from Stanley Consultants Incorporated for the Cedar River Parkway East improvements 2018 for the amount of $67,125.75. Pay request from Chicago Central and Pacific for the 20th Street Northwest reconstruction, railroad crossing improvements at 20th Street Northwest 2018 for the amount of $19,301.71. Pay request from A&R Land Services Incorporated for the airport land acquisition 2012 for the amount of $75. Pay request from AHTS Architects for the Waverly Senior Housing 420 Building project for the amount of $34,206.69 to be paid by Waverly Senior Housing. Class C liquor license for El Sol Mexican Restaurant. Class E liquor license for liquor and tobacco outlet. And a Class B name wine permit for the Wild Carrot. Would entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of this consent calendar say yes?
Yes.
Close. Consent calendar is hereby approved. Next item is regular business. Resolution 1950, a resolution determining whether the City of Waverly should continue to support the Champions Ridge project as set forth in the development agreement contained in Resolution 11158.
Good evening. This is Brenda Meyer. Can you hear me all right? Brenda Meyer, I am an at-large member of the Champions Ridge Governing Board and I am here-
Just a minute, Brenda, till we get into a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you would, please. Entertain a motion.
I would move the approval of Resolution 1950 as read by the mayor.
Second?
Second.
Now, discussion? Yes, please.
Sir, if I could, 1950 is a dual resolution, one for and one against. It is not a set resolution dictating either way. So I don't know if we could truly have a motion, so to speak, on that resolution. So determine the direction of what the council would like to proceed. Just to clarify.
Very good. Okay. I think we'll proceed.
I'm Brenda Meyer, at-large member of Champions Ridge Governing Board. And with me is Greg Miller, also a member, and I'm representing Waverly Softball Association. After the January 21st, 2019 City of Waverly Council meeting, the Champions Ridge Governing Board decided to suspend project fundraising efforts in an order to consider future direction, primarily the path of securing loan proceeds to help with the purchase of ground. The Champions Ridge Governing Board met weekly and engaged in several discussions of options. Members of the Champions Ridge Governing Board met with the City of Waverly staff to propose a solution of the Waverly Shell Rock or Waverly Softball Association and the Bremer County Fair Association entities purchasing the remaining land from the City of Waverly. It was our understanding that there would be some communication with council members regarding a possible purchase proposal. The Waverly Softball Association Executive Committee has met and agreed to interest in this proposal. The Bremer County Fair Board has met and agreed in interest to this proposal. The details of the proposal are not yet fully vetted. The Champions Ridge Governing Board is committed to working through a purchase proposal as quickly as possible with the City of Waverly. And when the proposal is ready, it will be presented to council for action.
The only thing I wanted to add is the reason why we went down this path, and we met with James and Bill multiple times, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you didn't know that, we met with them twice. They informed us that you did go into closed session about this. But the reason why we did go this route is we contacted our engineer the day after we met on that Monday night of the council meeting. And they said that in a perfect world with a perfect timeline, in a perfect situation, it would never happen under that date timeline. So, we thought, we have to figure out a way to move forward, and that's why we're here today with this proposal.
So, in essence, the governing boards have decided that the current arrangement is not the one to move forward on. So, our action of a resolution that would match that consensus is what you're looking for, with the stipulation that we'll stay in contact with each other to see where it goes from here?
Help, I'm not sure I'm clear, Dan, on what, when you say the current proposal, the boards aren't in agreement. Can you explain that a little bit further?
If I understand what you said, you've publicly stated that your plan for fundraising that we have been trying to support for the last couple of years, you have now tabled or discontinued to look at another option.
No, I would say, what I would say we're doing with that is we're actually, we suspended it for two months because we felt we needed to be certain on our direction of what we want to do rather than going out and asking folks for money and yet not knowing kind of the final resolution. But I look at this as probably really putting an additional arm of financing on the project or fundraising. One is fundraising, one will be financing. The fundraising will be to continue the project in exactly the same direction as where we've been headed all along. The financing is what I'd say, a new idea, new concept in terms of buying the city out of their interest in the ground so that the two parties that make up Champions Ridge, the ball group and the fair group, can move forward on the project independently without having to bother you, I guess we'd say, and without you having to bother us to keep the project moving.
So when you say you're representing the governing board, and this is a proposal from the Champions Ridge Governing Board, then you're saying that this proposal that you have yet to work out the details for is supported, at least at this point, without all of the details, but at least at this point, by the three organizations, the fair, the softball organization, the ball organization, and the government.
And what?
Champions Ridge. And Champions Ridge Board.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yes. And, you know, eight weeks has passed since the last meeting. You might say, well, what have you done in the last eight weeks? But there have been at least three proposals for how we would do this. And we have three groups working on it. So there has been already a fair amount of back and forth amongst those groups and their boards in getting people on the same page as to how we want to move forward. You know, obviously, there have been conversations with the two gentlemen here. You probably are all aware, you know, we've thrown out some purchase price options, but that all has to be negotiated. So, there's a certain, and then obviously, we need to secure those parties that are going to come along beside us and help us finance it. So, you know, I think we've made a lot of progress in the last eight weeks on how would we put this together? Do we have people behind it? How would we stage the project again, you know, with these two arms of fundraising and financing? But now, really what we're here tonight asking is, and I know, I think you've all had some background on it as far as how we would go about it, but we need some time to line up the financing and work with the city on what would the amount be?
In simple, direct language, is it my understanding that you're quote pulling the plug on the city's involvement?
Well, when you say pulling the plug, yes. I mean, the answer would be yes. We are asking to buy your interest out. I think there's been conversations that, you know, there's a lift station issue yet. I don't know what all the different, I know every time we have this conversation, the lift station comes up. And I have an amount of a half a million on that. So, I maybe let you speak to that.
Yeah, that would be negotiated in the development agreement. We'd have to come up with a new development agreement. The city would still have some sort of interest, but that would be negotiated out in the purchase.
I guess I just have a, I mean, I'm glad to hear that you're thinking of alternative plans. I guess I'll say what I've said before, and that is that I really do think we need ball diamonds. And obviously, we need new fairgrounds. So, if your expectation, and going this route, your expectation is that the city really just shouldn't be concerned about ball diamonds, or be trying to be working on anything to get those, that you feel that your new plan will make expeditious headway on that so that the city doesn't need to be concerned about that. I mean, I'm just, I feel like we have some responsibility there.
Yeah. I mean, that's arguable by many people. And I guess responsibility, in what responsibility comes in the form of management of the program, financing the program, all sorts of things. And so I would ask back, what is your definition of concern for the program? How would the city like to be involved in that? Because obviously, you know, everybody would be interested in having the city throw money at it. But that's been kind of one of those things where we haven't had that. And I think the management of it is largely outside of the city's purview as well right now.
Sure.
So, what would your desire for involvement be?
Well, first I'd say, I mean, I would just say that, I mean, we have spent $1.4 million on it, the city has so far. Now, if you purchase the land back, it'll be less than that. But I guess the involvement is that perhaps there are other ideas or other spaces, or I don't know, just other, something other that is a little bit different perhaps and not as overwhelming in some ways as this great project on paper. It looks wonderful, but something that's more realistically accomplishable, for lack of a better way of saying it, I guess. And, you know, whether the city might have some ideas about that, that together, you know, we might be able to just think through that a bit more rather than be wedded to this plot of land with this design. I don't have anything in particular in mind. I just, I have the same concern I had before, which is just, is it doable? And maybe what you're saying is if you buy the land back, maybe your plans will change. Maybe it won't be the same plan. I don't know. Yeah.
So where we're coming from is, we work with all these individual groups in the ball system, and we do need a home. And so that's what we're trying to strive for. And we feel like our best opportunity to do this is to take the control back of the project. We have had great strides in fundraising. We have great leads in fundraising. And so to, as far as being unrealistic, we have financial institutions out there saying, hey, we'll look at your books. We feel like this is a viable option. So as far as, is this a realistic avenue to go? If the local banks are saying, yeah, we're willing to take a look at it, to see, you know, where we could be at, that's something different.
Sure. So you would really not want us then, I mean, coming back to my original question, you really would just want to, want the city to wash their hands of it and the same on your side? And then you would just go ahead and move forward?
We're not saying you would wash your hands, but I, part of the ball groups, feel like the city has responsibility for parks and programming.
Yeah.
They don't have any responsibility for ball programming in town. So I feel like there is a responsibility there, and that would be negotiated out in this process.
I guess that was kind of the intent of my question, just to get a little more clarity there. Because, again, we're a body that has to act on resolutions that are put in front of us. And we've got one outstanding that says that we're going to be some very specific benchmarks hit. The lack of hitting that doesn't give us much option other than voting against, and that's the wrong word to use here because that's not the message I'm trying to send. But my hope would be, and I think Edie's helped us get to that, is saying no today doesn't mean we'd say no to everything going down. There is some desire on the council, and I'm speaking in generals here because we have to have those discussions, to continue to support ball programs and the fair as they move forward. It just wouldn't be under the resolution that's in front of us. Tonight was kind of a go, no-go, do-not-do type thing. And if there's another resolution that comes before us, I think that's great. It continues to show that this is a project that has merit, which I've always said. It just may need to be reshaped as far as who the drivers of it are. And the city take less of a drive in getting the facility built to maybe be able to support it in other ways.
And again, I want to reinstate that the day after, we made a phone call to our professionals that we hired with the city's help to go forward with those benchmarks. And they said, absolutely the most unrealistic thing we could do at this point. They said eight weeks isn't nearly to get the packets together, shipped out, and received back, and ready to award. Said, perfect world, perfect situation, could never happen. So that's why we went this way, this route. Within days of that, we met with James and Bill to go over this particular option. And they said, yeah, we feel like that's probably the better of the two options, and agreed with us. So that's why we came down this path today.
What's your understanding of why financial institutions are more interested in financing this now than they were at the January meeting? When now you'd actually own-
Because we didn't ask for any financing in January. All we'd had is cash, cash and pledges.
I thought Terry had said that you'd had conversations with area banks.
That wasn't part of the benchmark, so there was no reason to chase that feather when this was the bigger issue we had to hit. So we didn't touch financing because this was the focus on the cash pledges. So we have to figure out financing if this is the route we're going. So we've turned over information to the banks. They're considering it. They're going over it. And they're willing to enter into this negotiation process. I think initially, Ann, you were looking at pledges from the banks to give money for the project. Here, you would have the ground as actual collateral. And that's why the consideration would be there. And we do have pledges from local banks.
I think it's important, at least my understanding is, to clarify that all of the resolutions this year, or last year and this year, have included not just benchmarks of pledges, but also documentation and verification of financing, which would include, you know, something from banks and so on. So I think, you know, we were kind of interested in both, honestly, to see the full picture.
So when you mentioned the banks, are you speaking of the four that I'm aware of in Waverly, or certain ones among them? of in Waverly, or certain ones among them?
I don't have any sort of documentation saying that I can share that information.
If I could, Fred Ribich with Champions Ridge, I wanted to come back to Dan's concern about the action you have in front of you this evening. I think what we are asking for as a project is the opportunity to develop a proposal for purchasing the land, and spelling out issues regarding development of the project, and what the city's role in that would be. And, in my mind at least, it ought to be conceivable that the resolution in front of you this evening could be tabled until such time as that proposal is worked through and presented to the city. Now, what action would be necessary in terms of taking the resolution in front of you this evening off the table, and whether it would simply be replaced by a different action, I don't know. But we spent a lot of time discussing the idea of purchasing the land that remains, and how that would be financed, and what kinds of benefits that provides not only to the project, but potentially to the city as well. And so, we're here to say, give us some time to make a firm proposal that you can look at, that has all the details worked through, so that that can be considered. Obviously, the council would have to approve the sale of the land. And what happens to the resolutions on the agenda for this evening? I, I guess, I would say they get tabled until there's a consideration of a purchase proposal.
We could also, we could also vote on the resolution to terminate the city's involvement, and then put the land up for sale, and...
Well, if we terminate the city's involvement in here, that doesn't preclude Champions Ridge negotiating with city staff to purchase the profit, or purchase the land, or, you know, move in some other direction. But I, I suppose, the idea of, of kind of sitting and waiting is, is frustrating to me, because I feel like we do need to move on ball diamonds, we do need to move on fairgrounds, and I'm not a big fan of just sitting and, and waiting some more. If, if nothing else, we can terminate this agreement, and it frees up the city staff to look at options. This is certainly a great option, and I would like to see something come of this, but I would also like to free our leisure services and city staff's hands to, to look at more options than just this one. And I, I think, you know, if Champions Ridge can come up with a, a good offer, when they get their financing involved, in line, and they can come back and, and make an offer for the land, I would certainly support that. I'm just not in favor of another proposal to wait and see. I, I would like to really free up our city staff to, to work while Champions Ridge puts their, their offer together.
Chris Ticks, Secretary for the Bremer County Fair Board. It does, if you do cancel, I believe it does have implications toward the fair, and the cancellation would require the 120 donated by the county to go back to the supervisors. And, and speaking with them, I don't know that we would continue to get that 120 for future if this is, if this is taken apart. So, it would, it would damage the fair's proposal by 120,000 at least.
You mean, the fair's, the fair's contribution?
Yeah.
But you could, if, if, if the project moved along in a way that, that the fair thought was productive, I mean, you could always recommit that, right?
Not from the county, though?
That's up to the supervisor.
Ah, that was from the county, that's right. Okay. Yeah.
My, my question, I guess, would go to Bill on the, the legal side of it. Right now, we control the land. We have ownership of the land, but if we terminate the development agreement, which is with the Ball Diamond Group, with the Champions Ridge Group, and look to sell the land, we are then into public sale of land, which means we would have to take the highest bid, which a private developer could come in over the top of the Ball Diamond Group, and even if our best intentions were to sell it to them, if they got their financing, somebody else comes in $1 more than what they can come up with, by law, we have to sell it to that developer, which means we don't have control of that land anymore. It's not going to the Ball Diamond Group. It's, it's not the direction we want to go.
There's multiple concerns we have here, and, and first of all, there's a development agreement that was done in 2011. That agreement talked about a joint venture between these three parties, the city and the Ball Diamonds and the fair. Those had obligations that have been partially done, partially are waiting to be done. That's the way this resolution was, was phrased, to talk about the development agreement. Subsequent to that, the city agreed to pay, to, to sell on contract 40 acres to the fair. It didn't go to the Champions Ridge Group, it went to the fair. So, the idea was that the fair was going to own their 40 acres, and the city was going to own the rest of the land, and the Champions Ridge Board, operating board, was going to operate the whole site. So, what we're doing is fundamentally changing what was envisioned back in 2011, when they did the development agreement. So, I think what they're really asking is that we have to step back from that development agreement, which doesn't necessarily cancel the contract for the fair's property. That's a separate contract, it has separate provisions that would have to be honored, or, or could be enforced. So, I think, what I, I guess I, on purpose, kind of did the two resolutions the way they were, because either we go along with what we've done already, the city, and we just give more time, or we say, it's time to go a different direction, and maybe one of those directions might be the consideration of selling the, the rest of the land, not the 40 acres, because that's already on contract, to a group, or the fair, or a combination thereof. That substantially changes everything. Whether we go, whether the city goes back and decides to continue to give the same offer of help and assistance through, whether it's a lift station or other circumstances that they would help with, would be the new development agreement that he spoke of, and that's where we would say, okay, we'll negotiate a price, and we'll also talk about the other obligations you want the city to do. So, I think there's more complications than, I, I don't think a tabling does anything for us. I think it really means, either we say, give them time to do it as it exists right now, or let's renegotiate the whole deal when it comes to that. And I think that's the two resolutions that, that we proposed.
And if they think it's helpful to them to, you know, to renegotiate the whole deal, then, I mean, I don't know, seems, seems like the logical thing to do to me.
Can I, can I just ask a question? You said there's two options. One is to continue as is, or renegotiate the whole deal. Within the option of continue as is, I want to make sure we're on the same page as to which one we're talking about. I think we are saying, you know, we want to continue the project as is with this additional, whatever, one to two months to figure out the financing part?
But if, but if you, if you bought the rest of the land, that changes fundamentally the relationship, because what was going to happen before is, the project gets built, the land is owned by the city, and, and the, and the Ball Diamonds lease their area, and you buy your area. So, really, we're changing the whole dynamics of the relationship.
Maybe what I'm asking is voting, and this is maybe a question for clarification, if you, if you would vote to continue the support of the project, is that a vote for allowing us the extra time to figure out the financing? Or if you vote to quit support of the project, is that a vote for allowing us the extra time for financing the project? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
In my opinion, but again, Bill can correct me legally, but the way I'm understanding things is, either way, you have the time. I mean, to do whatever you, you, you want. But the difference is that if we were to vote on the resolution that would terminate our participation as set forth in the development agreement, that means we would potentially have to return to that, to, to return to some sort of other negotiated agreement down the road, that would have to be presented at that time, and we'd look at it, and that sort of thing.
I, I don't know the legalese for, for expressing this, but I think our desire is to continue these negotiations in a one-on-one relationship with the city of Waverly without what I'd call the chaos or noise of other interested parties in that land. So, we want to keep the relationship between the person, or the entity that owns it and the entity that wants it, so that we have clear communication versus a bidding or against, like, I don't know if it was Tim who said, somebody come in, and then say, you know, and they have deeper pockets and more resources than a volunteer organization, and we just lose control of it completely for that reason. So, you know, I think this, I guess maybe what I'm trying to say is, I think the timing and the sequencing of how we move forward in the next couple of months makes a difference on whether or not that land is available for Champions Ridge to purchase versus some outside party.
Yeah, that's, I guess, why I was looking for Bill from, from the legal side of it. If we terminate the development agreement we currently have with them, there's no, nothing binding us or tying us to the Champions Ridge Group at all anymore. So, somebody else could come in potentially and offer us more money for that land, and basically, put it on us to, to come up with a valid reason to deny, which is not very easy under the law if we're willing to sell it.
Justification for selling it to a lower bidder.
Yeah.
But only, but only if we have it up for sale.
Right, but if you, but if you have a designated buyer, you still have to get approval, you have to get approval of that sale.
Right, if we keep the development agreement going, for now, they can come up with their financing, rework the, a new development agreement, that we could come in and basically amend the development agreement we have from 2011, with a new development agreement that includes all the rest of this.
And it becomes, again, this is something that we've sort of touched on, because we've had several conversations, but nothing really very detailed with the group about how this would work. We would still want to get some advice from our attorneys in Duane, who provide assistance when, when you need assistance on very specific things like this. Because if we were to work this kind of arrangement, it, it may be doable, but we have very, the same concerns that you have about how we can sell land that the city owns when somebody else may be willing to pay more for it. And those are things we have to clear up before we could even consider that.
Right, but I, but I think, you know, even if it were to come to that, I mean, I think all that's, all, in quotation marks, that saying, is that we're probably talking about somewhere around market value for the land.
And market value is what a willing, buyer's willing to pay. You know, it's probably already in the range of what we own, and, and what we bought it for, but it depends on what your purpose is. If you're putting high rises there, it's worth a lot more money. If you're putting a ball diamond and a fairgrounds, it's not worth as much for farming it. So, there are a lot of concern, considerations. I think it's worth discussing, if, if, if the question is whether we don't support it anymore, or whether we look at their, their, their offers. That's what we told them. We thought, it's, it's a legitimate thing to come back to us with, it's a legitimate thing to consider by the city. Whether we think it's the right thing or not, it's, it's, that's immaterial. We didn't, we didn't really take that position. We just took the position, it's a, it's a valid thing to come up with an idea that, to consider for the council.
I think either way we look at it, the problem that we have is you have a development agreement specifically written among the parties, so anytime you determine you're going to sell the land, it makes that null. And that then opens us up to the guidelines, to the law, that we are a government entity with public land, and you can't just simply say, we're going to sell to you. I think you have to have a bidding process. That's where this gets very sticky. So, anytime you determine whether you're going to redevelop it or redraft it, if the sale of public property comes into play, we may have an issue with having to bid it, or have a public hearing to take those bids. You've seen the mess that happened with Sunnyside, and I can bring that up, but that's the kind of thing that can start to go south when you get into selling public property. And we don't want that to happen, so we would have to do a lot of discussion with attorneys, how do you get around this? Because at any point, you want to sell it, you're now changing that development agreement, it becomes a public issue.
To that point, I know, when we purchased the old Irving School property, at least within the economic development, there was some discussion, could we designate that as maybe what we thought we needed for housing? And then, put it out to bids for developers to come in and supply that housing? So, it seemed like we had the ability to designate a purpose for properties, so why can't we designate that the purpose for this property is ball diamonds and fairgrounds? And if somebody else wanted to come in and build them, great, but I, I don't know that it's quite as wide open as what we need.
I, I think I agree with you, and that's what I was trying to say, is that there are some issues that we have to work through, but I think it, it's something that we could, that could be doable, but we want to be very careful with that. We don't want to get into a long controversy, and it's really all about the negotiation after you've really decided that the previous relationship isn't working anymore. And I think that's...
And I guess that's where I'm struggling, is, as this project has gone on, we've added resolution on top of resolution, on top of purchase agreements, on top of letters of understanding, and when you try to unwind it and figure out exactly what we've said, I don't know that we can ever get to a solid foundation to work from. Part of me says, we need to set aside the current resolution, which has the development agreement in it, but ensure everybody that there's still support from the city to see what can be worked out, so that we can start from a clean slate, and don't have to worry about 10 years' worth of history.
What do you mean by support of the city confirms?
To support the groups moving forward, the combined fairground and ball diamond conglomys.
I thought you meant like something concrete.
No, again, I applaud the group for the realization that maybe a different path needed to be explored, and to me, they're very positive opportunities. But again, I don't want the message to be the city doesn't support Champions Ridge's goal. I just think it's not realistic for us to continue down the path under the current resolution and development agreement to reach that. So, a long-winded way of saying, I'm ready to dissolve, and again, I hate to word, use the word terminated, that's in the resolution here, and it's just set the current agreement aside, and not have it governed how we move forward.
And I think you're right in the fact that how we can bid it, we were just not ready to have an ironclad, this, Lord, this is done, we can do, we can move on. It's a lot of detail that's got to go into that, how that would come about, because we want to be very careful. We don't get, thinking that we're finished, and then all of a sudden, no, you missed us here, now we have to go through this all again, it's going to take three more years. This has happened in other cities, so just want to be careful.
Well, it sounds like it doesn't matter whether we continue the agreement or terminate the agreement, if we're planning on selling the land, we're going to have to go through the same, there, there's going to be some hoops to jump through, some sort of a rigmarole to get us to that point of selling the land, regardless of whether we maintain the development agreement or not.
I think it's accurate, yes. The minute you decide to sell the ground, there are stipulations we'll have to get in the middle of, to see how it's going to work, and how that would go forward.
What happens if we terminate the agreement? What happens with the fair property? Is that still stays, stands as it does now?
Separate entity completely, yep. It's already been on contract, that sits as it sits, that is not impacted by this.
So, just to be clear, Bill, I want to make sure I understand what you said before about if we were to approve this alternative resolution about terminating our participation in Champions Ridge. You're saying this would not put the county's contribution to the fair board into jeopardy? Is that fair to say?
I think at this point, it does not, because that's, that, that's part of that contract. Now, with, it was part of the real estate contract that we received that 120. If, if by terminating our agreement with the, our development agreement, the supervisors think that's some kind of... think that's some kind of change, that they want to pull back their donation, that's their...
But they would be acting as a separate entity then too, I mean, coming back to us with regard to that, so.
Right, because we consider the money that was paid on their behalf, on the project's behalf, on the fair's behalf, as money that came from them. And the donation was made to the fair, and the fair provided us with the money.
What happens if your negotiations with your financial institutions, et cetera, do not pan out and the development agreement has been terminated?
We sit here and the city owns the land with no change. I mean, we still need ball diamonds. We just chose to take this path to try to meet that need for our program.
Do you have any feeling if we don't have a development agreement in place that you would be able to, that that would impact your negotiations with the financial institutions?
Uh...
If we don't have a deal in place, we don't have any kind of agreement, are they sitting there going?
Yeah, my conversations with them is they're, they're similar seat that the city is, is they don't want to see this project have the land be sold and just sit there. So the financing wouldn't be a financing package just to buy the property. It would be a financing package to buy the property over here and to finish the project over here. So they would go together. As far as the city's involvement, I think they're going to want to see some city, or some, they want, they want to see a lift station, they're going to want to see it built to, maybe not it's 100% full, but at least a phase one so that it's operating and usable. So that, that would, you know, I can't speak on their behalf, but I'm assuming that they're...
What I'm saying is if we don't have a development agreement in place anymore, if we cancel that tonight, and you go to the bank saying, "We want to buy this from the city," and they say, "Well, is the city willing to sell it to you?" You go, "I don't know, because we don't have a development agreement anymore. I don't know if we can buy it from the city, but can you give us money to buy it?" That seems like a hard sell to me, to a financial institution to go to them and say, "We want to buy this, but we don't know if we can." Or are we even going to be able to?
In fact, we never did have an agreement to sell it, though, from the start. The development agreement was not that...
Right, they don't, they don't have any, I mean, we canceled the development agreement tonight.
Correct.
We have no, there's nothing tying us to Champions Ridge anymore.
Well, we still own the ground, though.
We own the ground, but there's nothing that ties us to them or them to us.
And our desire to want to do something about ball diamonds with the city of Waverly.
Right.
So, I mean, it's certainly something on the table that needs to be considered.
That's my concern, is if, I mean, we totally cut it loose, that we're out in limbo there, they're trying to negotiate for the possibility of maybe being able to buy something that they don't know if they'll be able to buy based on how Iowa laws go versus, you know, having us tied together and maybe we have some kind of development agreement where they're not buying 100% of the land. Maybe they have to buy 85% of the land to keep the development agreement somehow where the city can sell a part of it. And I don't know how, again, I don't know how the legalese is going to work out, but my fear is, knowing some of the state laws that come into play with this, with city-owned property and sales and things like that, that we're going to be in a bind and we're going to be in a place where, I don't know if we can designate it as, "This is only for parkland uses, so if we sell it, it has to be developed." I mean, it goes back to me thinking back to the original agreement when we bought the land from Neil Smith was for this purpose. That was the reason he was selling it to us. And had the fair, I think, had that Champions Ridge group known that they were going to have to buy it, ultimately, he would have worked at something to sell it to them as opposed to selling it to the city to then manage it for them.
Keep in mind that if, if you decide, if this council decides that we should sell this land to this nonprofit entity in order to create ball diamonds, it's going to be done with, with provisions that probably intertwine us a little bit because they're doing operations for us, they're running a program for us, they're running a program for us, or, not running it for us, but they're running it for the people of Waverly. So we'd want to tie into that somehow. Maybe that happens in a different way. Maybe it happens with an option to buy it back or an operational agreement or something else that we can tie together. Those are all circumstances that we have to take into consideration when they make an offer to the city to purchase the land. It's not going to be just like we sold it to a different developer. This is obviously a nonprofit that runs ball diamond operations in our city. We're not going to compete with them. So we, so we, we're going to be tied together somehow with this deal whenever it happens, if it happens. And so it's, it's really changing the deal, but it's, but it's not changing, it's not the same deal. It's recreating the deal, just like Dan said before, I think.
What precludes you from, you've got a development agreement in place tonight. We don't have the, I hate to say amended agreement, but the new agreement in place. But what, what would be wrong with keeping the current development agreement in place until the new one has been vetted and signed and everybody's clear on what that is? And at that time, there's a resolution to discontinue the previous development agreement to be replaced by the new development agreement. And at that time, maybe, Dan, it gets to some of the things that you talked about where you peel off 10 years' worth of history and it's kind of a hard, hard mark in time where now going forward, it's a new arrangement. But, and we're not asking for several months. I think as a group, we've, we've said we'd probably need till May 20th at the latest. So, you know, what we'd like to be able to do is come back with our financing proposal, the agreement amongst us for a purchase price that maybe what, it's not necessarily a softness, but what, what is the city going to support in, in the new development agreement that maybe is somewhat reflective in our purchase price? We may pay more, but we get something else in return, you know, as the development of the property goes on. So that, that's just the suggestion. Could we do that?
I guess that's what, kind of what I'm suggesting is, I'm just, I'm concerned that if we cut it totally loose, that we fall under some other things we're not quite sure about, even though our intention is to do this, that state law may come in, the whole Sunnyside situation in Waterloo, that was their intention, but it backfired on them in a spectacular way and, and I don't think we're doing anything for profit by any means that that, that's the difference with that process was, it was coming up with a process.
That was set for housing, though, and it was arguable about who was going to do the housing. So if this is designated for recreational purposes that you've outlined, then the worst thing is you'd have somebody else that wants to come in and do the recreational purposes that are outlined. I think you can work through the issue because you still control the land, you determine what you will and won't sell it for, whether that's why you do zoning, et cetera. You will not allow houses to go in this area, it's built for commercial property. You can't just turn around and sell it all for housing later and hope that it gets zoned. I mean, there's a lot of checks and balances involved in this, I guess I would call it, and so I'm not as concerned with that, I guess, for myself. I think that as long as you have an indication you would like to sell it for that purpose, there's a way to work around that. Am I an attorney? I am not, Bill is, but I mean, that's what it sounds like would make the most sense. Not that that's what the Iowa law states, because it does make sense, but you would be able to hopefully designate what you wanted that used for and what you would sell it for. I'm not 100% certain on that, but I think it's something we can look into.
I think like Brian said, it boils down to whether we are, we think it's in the city's best interest to continue to wait. And I think, you know, we have a fiscal responsibility to the citizens. We've invested $1.4 million in this, and although I, I'm a supporter of the fair, I'm a supporter of ball diamonds, we don't have anything to show yet for our investment. And the discussion here tonight reminds me, this is, we're already in a bind, I think, with this project. And waiting longer puts everything else on hold, puts Memorial Park on hold, it puts ball diamonds on hold, and, you know, I agree with what Brian said, I'm not inclined to continue to wait. I think the current development agreement, it's not working out, and I think it's time to, to go in a different direction, whatever that direction may be. So I'm not inclined to, to table anything.
And if I can ask you a question, what is the city going to gain between now and, let's say, May 20th?
You know, I don't know. I didn't know what we were going to gain in January, waiting two months. I think that, as Dan said, there's been layer upon layer of resolution and extensions, and I just don't, I, I just think we need to make a decision and we need to figure out what to do. We need ball diamonds for kids, and, you know, the kids this project was designed for in the beginning are now in college probably, and so we don't have new diamonds. And I think that kids deserve that. I don't think this development agreement is feasible and is going anywhere, and I think we should not table it. I think we need to choose a resolution and vote.
Which is what I thought you came and kind of asked for tonight, sort of.
And I totally respect that, I agree 100%. Where I'm coming from is, this is a new avenue, and part of this negotiation will be, you, you know, we have, we have to be built by a certain date or whatever stipulations you might want to throw into that, but between now and May, middle, end of May, you're not going to have ball diamonds built. So if we can at least go down this path, you'll know by the end of May what avenue you're going to be able to go to. So for next fiscal year, you can budget whatever you need to, but for this year, you can't build it anyway. So what are you to gain by saying, "Nope, see you later, we're going to go a different avenue," instead of, "Well, let's, let's see if we can't get them to buy it, go their avenue, work their strategic plan that they think is going to work, and if it doesn't work out, we're out nothing, because we have, still have plenty of time to budget and move forward with the things that you feel the need of Waverly is."
I guess I don't understand why voting to cease this current development agreement prevents you from negotiating with the city to buy the property.
Yeah, I'm not saying it does.
And I don't think it takes away the desire of the city and the city council to move forward with a solution and work with you on some kind of solution.
I'm just saying that the current process is a quagmire, and so...
I would think that if we cancel the resolution or the development agreement now, in two months, May 20th, whatnot, you can come back to us with an improved resolution or say, "This is what our plan is," rather than in two months having another continuing resolution. I suppose I would like the next time we see Champions Ridge, that you have a kind of a working plan that we can get behind, rather than having another resolution to kind of kick the can down the road. And I feel like there's benefit to terminating this existing agreement that's not getting us anywhere so that we can have a clean slate on which to kind of have a new development agreement.
My concern with that, Brian, is, I'll give you an example. Do you walk into a house without a price tag on it and say, "Yeah, I'll pay it for it, whatever you want?" Or do you negotiate that out beforehand, go to your financial institution and say, "This is what they want, this is what I can afford, what can we make happen?" Does that make sense? So we can't go down the road saying, "We're going to give you a proposal and you're going to shoot it down or take it." We have to negotiate that out and say, "Well, this is what we want, this is what we want, let's come together and make it so it's best for the community," instead of us shooting a blank arrow at you and saying, "Is this good enough?" Because we've done that before and it hasn't went out, it hasn't been very good.
I just want to make sure I'm not, my sense and the comments aren't saying that. The comments are, "We'll continue to work putting together that as a partner in whatever the new resolution is, not, you go off and just make one up and see if we like it," so...
Yeah, and that's where I'm at, Dan. I wasn't getting that from...
Oh, no, I, I mean, one of the things I, I feel like is our city staff can continue to negotiate this. I mean, I think we have, in many ways, I feel like the continuing resolutions kind of are binding our city staff's hands to kind of very limit, you know, what they can do. I would like them to feel free that if they have ideas beyond the existing development agreement, that they can find solutions. So, I mean, that's part of it, yes. I think the city staff should definitely continue to work with Champions Ridge to negotiate this.
I think you're, I think what you came in here with, your inclination and what you articulated, I, I think is good. I think it's a sign of sort of what I would call a hard reset, and I think that's what we need, I think that's what we all need to, to help this, this project along. So, given that, if I understood that correctly, and given the fact that all along in these discussions, I've never heard any council member or any city staff person say they were not supportive of the project or at least supportive of somehow increasing access to, to more ball diamonds and to help the fair move to where it needs to be, whatever that is best location. So given all of that, and then given what I think city staff, both Bill and James said tonight about that, the future potential hurdles that Tim brought up, that they feel that those are likely doable, I, you know, I, I think we should move ahead with what you originally asked for, which, you know, which would be, and I don't have a problem with termination, because we're terminating an agreement that doesn't appear to be working all that well, so let's terminate that one, let's hard reset, let's start over, and, and let's move forward in the direction that you outlined in the beginning. I, you know, I, I think that's a good idea.
I struggle with a lot of what Edie said, it needs to be reset. My concern is we table it for 60 days, and again, there are some naysayers out in the community that are not in favor of this, and every time we have discussions here, that naysaying voice reappears, gets stronger, points at, "See, we told you they couldn't get it done." My concern would be if we would say, "Hey, let's give it 60 days to see if we can get somewhere. We're going to come back and find out, I need 70 days to do it, and now we're going to be in the same discussion. You missed another mark, are you really going to get anywhere?" I'm supporting what Edie is saying, is let's just say the current one isn't working, no fault of anybody's. Let's clear the slate, state in the resolution that there's still support from the city for Champions Ridge's goals, and direct staff to work towards a new agreement that supports that.
And I guess I would just add, I think the resolution already, already says that. It already articulates support, and it, it also clearly articulates collaboration with city, with the city.
That that continues, what the latter part of that? My, my point I was going to make is I'm concerned about how this gets viewed in the public's eye, that when they hear the word "terminate," that that conveys something that we're going to have to constantly educate people about what it means. And so I'm just asking, I guess, for the press that's here as well, and for how that, that resolution is worded, that it's clear that we're ending an agreement that we had been operating by and working toward developing a new agreement.
That's exactly what the end of the resolution says.
But my concern is there's a lot of whereas's in there that tend to focus on missed opportunities in their self.
What the resolution says is that it directs staff to look at community ball gardens to explore and formulate alternative projects for this, for consideration by the council, doesn't say to come up with a new development agreement.
Well, an alternative, it's very general. I mean, I see that as general. Alternative project is, you know, an alter...
I'm just, you know, the naysayers are going to come out and say, "See, we told you so, you voted it down, you cut it off, it couldn't work." Why continue?
There's going to be naysayers regardless of what we do.
Well, that's, I mean, you know, you say, "Naysayers push it off, you know, to delay," but I think the naysayers come out on the other side and say, "Yeah, we won, because you canceled it."
I think this is still the cleanest way to do it, to explain it to anybody who asks. If the press is responsible in their reporting, it will be clear. I don't know how many times we've all said we're supportive of this. I mean, you know...
Yeah, it's right. Perception does mean a lot, and speaking for myself, no matter what we vote tonight, I continue to support the Champions Ridge project, and if there are naysayers out there, they're just going to have to say nay. I mean, we're trying to be positive and we're trying to be realistic, and I think that's where I am.
Someone ready to articulate a motion of some kind? Can we craft a resolution?
Well, we have one, we've got, we've got two.
Yeah, no, I know there are two. Yeah, no, I know there are two.
Okay. Unless somebody wants to write a completely new one.
I mean, as written, I can't support either one of them, because I feel some of the wherethis in there are misleading to what the overall intent is. I mean, again, I'm, I'm not necessarily making this as a motion, this time I'm throwing it on the table. But if we would table this until the first meeting in April, to allow a better resolution to be put forward, that clearly states what we've talked about here, that there is support within the council, that the current agreement is, is not one that either party feels will allow the project to move forward, and we direct staff to continue to work with Champions Ridge. To me, that would be the best solution, or the best option going forward, is just to have a more positive resolution that spells out what our real intent is.
I have to say, I disagree with that, Dan, because, you know, all this, all the wherethis do, and this is exactly, in my opinion, what they should be doing, is chronicling the history of what has happened. And then, when it comes down to the actual resolution, it's set, well, the, actually be it resolved, that, you know, is, is, is clear and positive. I mean, I, I, I don't think we should be in the business of, of, you know, kind of, I don't know what term to use, editing, you know, the chronology of what's happening so that it has a certain flavor. I think this is very objective. It's neither positive nor negative, until it gets to the very last paragraph, which is positive and supportive. Everything before that simply chronicles what's happened, which is very important in this case, because we've had so, so much trouble with it.
My fear is if we table it until into April, we now move a target, target date to basically July, end of June or July. So, you know, we just kick the can down the road further.
And again, I wouldn't, I would suggest that a new resolution has no dates in it. That, that, again, if the ball groups can move forward, great. Certainly not advocating that city staff go out and put a for sale sign on the lot the next day. But to Edie and Ann's point, if another developer came in and had some ideas for it, I think we have to listen to it. But that doesn't mean that we're abandoning Champions Ridge. It just means, you better move quickly to ensure your spot at the first of the line.
But I think we are committing to, I would say, using that land for ball diamonds and fair. I mean, so if you're saying another developer comes along, we're talking about another developer who wants to build ball diamonds out there. We're not talking about someone who's talking about, you know, putting in another housing development. I think we can specify in our comprehensive land use plan, what we want that for.
Well, and I, I mean, honestly, I, I mean, I have to say, not that, I mean, I don't know of any developer that's interested, maybe some of the rest of you do. But I, I guess I would say, if a developer came, it's our responsibility to listen to that. Now, are we still committed to this? Yes. But if somebody else comes along and we need to listen, that's been part of our problem, is we haven't been able to do anything. We can't, you know, so, okay, listening doesn't mean you're going to agree. We might still say, no, we're not interested in that. You know, we'd rather see ball diamonds out there. But, you know, I, I feel like that's our responsibility, is to, well, to be responsible with that land and with our, our commitment to the city youth for ball diamonds and to the fair board for the fair. And we, we, we can't do that, in my opinion. I know some of you may disagree with this, but I don't think we can do that if we, if we are always in a holding pattern.
Dean?
Just a quick, very quick comment.
Danny Bolz, treasurer of the, of the fair from Sumner. And I'd just like to reiterate what Chris said earlier, to make sure everybody fully understands, that if we do terminate the present agreement, that that does put that $120,000 in jeopardy that come from the supervisors. Because that money was part of the agreement for the project under the current agreement. So when you start talking legalities, that is a potential thing to come back and harm us. So, I, I don't know if that's where we want to go or not. To me, that's just another thing for us to wonder about, if, if we don't support that original development agreement.
I thought city staff answered that question, though, at least to my satisfaction to a certain degree. What did you say about that? Do you want to repeat what you said about that?
Well, it's a, I, I don't believe that supervisors are going to take that away from the fair if they're going to use that property regardless. I mean, that was, that was intended to support the fair's project. And so, unless the fair abandons that particular property, I don't think that $120,000 is at risk for that reason. That's the way I understand it.
Yeah. Well, we hope so. But I, I just, you know, that's just another can to open up and, and another thing to deal with, too, when we could just continue the, the project here in the way it's been put forward to us. And another thing I'd like to ask the city staff is that, when we talk about that selling that, any additional ground to any of the other entities involved in this three-way partnership that we're in right now, when the fair was presented, the installment contract to begin with, there was no bidding process, there was nobody else looked at. That was something that was under directive of the city and city council to reposition the fair in that location. There was no bidding process. It was, it was something, it was an amount that was agreed on between three parties, or two parties, I should say, in that particular contract. So, why can't that kind of format take place, again, on purchasing additional property in an installment contract, again, without any specifically bidding process, whatever we talked about, that we're concerned about?
I think we talked about the fact that that may be the case. And it depends on whether you're doing a joint venture agreement for a different purpose. So, we certainly think that that's a way that we could do that. It just takes some time to do that.
Thank you.
I'm still in, would entertain a motion, resolution?
I'll move, I'll move a resolution that the city council does hereby declare its termination of the city's participation in the Champions Ridge project as currently set forth in the development agreement in resolution 11-158, and directs the Leisure Services Commission and city staff to work with the community ball groups to explore and formulate alternative projects for consideration by the council.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
No.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Resolution 11-158. There's a vote of five to one.
Resolution 19-
1958, I'm sorry.
1958?
1958. We'll get it.
I just ask, and a follow-up to that, city staff, if, you know, as this develops, and if you could keep us very much apprised of what's, what's going on. Because, I mean, I for one, you know, would be very interested in what, want to make sure we're doing everything we can to move their efforts along.
We'll continue our conversations right away.
And I think it's important to get the council, whether it's Feud de Time or whatever, involved in those meetings, so that we have an idea of what's going on before it comes to us. But, no, I, it's important to continue discussions and try and hammer out an agreement. Because, as has been stated here, we're all in support of, of the fair moving and out and the ball diamonds being built to serve the youth and, and the adult softball leagues and things. But somehow, we've, for 10 years, we've been going down the road and it didn't get anywhere. And I think it's time that somehow, now that there's an alternative idea, at least, on the books, that we, that we keep exploring and move forward.
Just wondering if we need to look at bringing forth rezoning to park, public park for it, as opposed to agriculture, what it is right now?
I think we're getting into other discussions past this point. The vote's been taken.
Yeah.
And we can certainly have these at some other time. But we have direction. And if all do with respect to time, and we'd like to move forward. Thank you, council.
Well, this, this may not be in order, but I, I would like to commend the Champions Ridge group for their tenacity and their long suffering in this process. And I, I hope they come to a good conclusion for us to approve. I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. Item number two, resolution 19-51. A resolution, wait till gallery clears a minute. to remove the Third Street Bridge Southeast Bridge from the National Historic Record. Entertained a motion?
It would move resolution 1951, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
So I guess just one point I'll make for clarity, is that when we voted to take it off the registry, it was our understanding that that would not affect our options for what to do with it. And then it sounds like we got information contradicting, contradictory to that.
There's some potential information contradicting it at this point. We always knew we could remove the bridge, because that doesn't prevent you from doing that. If, if we remove it and replace it, there are some more complications that would come if it was on the register. So it's clear to get it unregistered at this point. And I'm figuring out ways of doing that, because it's not a common thing to have happen. And I think there's some different things that we can argue to the State Historic Preservation Office, as well as the National Register at this point in time.
You are correct. When it was brought to you to be put on the registry, we were on the assumption that it would not have any financial impact to the project going forward. We are now finding out that may not be the case. So that's hence why we have this on for consideration.
And just to be clear, this action has nothing to do with any decision on what, if anything, replaces it. This is just to give us the latitude to-
Options.
Start having those discussions. We can't do any replacement, regardless of what it is with this in place, for any kind of funding from state or fed.
I'm sorry, I'm totally confused.
It's okay.
I mean, really. So, what did we know originally, and we acted based on what information? And then what has changed since then?
There's a 106 review process that has to be done, no matter what we do, because it's an historic, it's a historic building. They basically want to look at why you're removing it and what brought you to that decision. Generally, if you say, it's going to cost, it's not going to be a cost-effective thing to, to fix it and keep it in place. Generally, that, that satisfies the, the review itself. And the same thing will happen with regards to being on the register. So what we have to do is show them that we've done our due diligence and that the money to be spent on trying to renovate or trying to keep it in place as an historic structure, it does not make sense. Does not make economic sense. Now, when we had already done that before, and then moved forward with registering it, it was because we understood that that didn't matter for that purpose. Now, we couldn't have gotten historic preservation money to tear it down and replace it. But there are other things that may be available, that we'd have to go through the same process we're going through to remove it from the register. So it's the same, it's the same argument, the same discussion, only it's done preemptively, like now, as opposed to when we potentially have a project in two years or three years.
But I think your question was, what did we know?
Yeah.
What did we base our vote on? And we were told at the time we voted, that it would not-
And exactly that.
-limit our options to have it on the historic registry. And now it apparently-
That was, that was the, that was the thing that, that we didn't have, we didn't have the facts that, that we had now.
Well, and, and we say limit our options, I think we mean limit our funding options. So if we're talking about replacing the bridge with a different structure, we can get some state funding, I believe, to help us pay for that. And the concern now is having this as a historic place, those funds would not be available to us. Now, it's not 100% sure if we would be able to get those funds or not. I think we were told before, that being a historically registered place would not affect our ability to get those funds. But now that we're actually registered, people are backtracking that commitment, saying it won't matter. So, to make sure that it won't affect our ability to get those funds, I think that's why we're asking to have this removed. There's no one saying, yes, it'll hurt us, or no, it won't hurt us.
We just aren't sure.
But, yeah.
And who is not saying that?
Hmm?
Who is saying that, that it might now limit our funding options?
Talking with the DOT.
For the state bridge funds, a million dollars we've talked about, that was always there waiting. Now that's in jeopardy because we put this on the National Registry, even though at the time we acted-
We didn't think it would jeopardize that.
We were assured it would not be the case, so-
We were assured by, by the same, or by the same-
By the DOT necessarily.
Agency?
Okay.
Yep.
So, so what's the truth?
The truth is, today, the DOT is saying, we'll not have those funds, federal or state, for any project or replacement if it is still on the registry. So we have to delist it.
Okay. What about the other agency that told us different? If we asked them today, what would they say?
Well, I think it was our, the historic preservation people believed it didn't make any difference.
I don't know that we had an official ruling from the state-
Who are the historical preservation people?
Yes.
The commission.
Our commission.
Our commission, and what they understood, based on their best knowledge, best understanding.
Right.
But you are saying that if we delist it, then we are eligible for these funds? We're pretty sure of that?
Potentially.
I would think the bridge funds would be there. They've been there every year for as long as, we could probably go back. So I don't see there any change in that.
We get a letter of invitation, I think, every January, right?
Yep, January, February.
To, please come take this money.
We have to tell them we're not ready yet, every year. So, we're hoping to get that satisfied.
I think one of the important things that happened is that we actually explored the costs of actually keeping it in place. There's two issues that I think are really unclear for me, and that's because we were going to substantially rebuild that entire structure, to make it almost like a replica bridge, only incorporating some of the elements. We were going to build a new superstructure, we were going to build the piers, we were going to build a substantial amount of rebuild for that bridge to stay in place.
That was considered as something-
If you would have went forward with it, there still would have been very minimal-
The plans and specifications that were presented for fixing the green bridge in place, for, for the use that we did, that we spent money on, would have substantially replaced most of the element, the, the important elements of that bridge.
See, I, I remember that discussion, too, and I remember it very differently, because someone asked, does that mean we have to do anything? If it's a part of the historical registry and designated as such officially, do we have to do anything to keep it up? And I thought the answer was no, it could fall into the river, if it, if it did that.
Oh, that's true. I'm, I'm telling you, though, if we actually did a project-
Yeah.
-that attempted to keep it in place safely and use it-
Was that, was that a serious consideration at one point?
The very first project that was looked at, engineered, then-
We actually engineered, but you spent a lot of money on engineering-
Years ago, very much.
Well, 2017.
Okay, right for now, okay.
And what I'm saying is that we engineered that to use it as a, either a pedestrian bridge or, or a vehicle bridge. And in order to do that, to, to, to keep it in an historic, somewhat historic position, it would have cost us close to $3 million to do that. And it would have had a 20-year lifespan, is the way it was.
But to do so, most of it would have been replaced, from the deck to the piers and the pillars, everything except the rail structure possibly. So in a sense, the bridge wasn't really historical anymore than the appearance, because very few pieces were left from the original structure.
It would have looked like, somewhat like, it would have looked like the old bridge.
Yes.
Because you replace the pieces with, with pieces that looked like that. But they would have probably done it in a more modern way. And so, it, it, and so that, that's one aspect of it. And the, and the second aspect is whether we're actually going to do it and use it for purposes of- of preserving it as a historic structure.
And more so, we would have had to pay for it all ourselves.
Right.
There would not have been federal or state money to assist us in such a renovation.
James, can you move the mic down between you and Bill? I'm not sure if Bill got one.
I have one.
Oh, okay.
But I didn't think, I mean, where the, how high were the engineering costs? I guess I just don't remember that those were significant.
We spent about $90,000.
Total combined has been about $220,000, roughly.
Well, but that's from the very beginning. That's not just for the historic part, right? That's for the whole.
This was, none of this was done for the historic part.
Oh, okay. Then I understand.
The project.
Yes.
To keep it in place to actually use it.
Right.
Because if we don't do that, it'll end up sometime in the future, like the one that just got washed out.
Yeah, right.
I mean, that's what happens eventually.
Yeah, no, that, that I, that I understand and makes sense, and that's how I remembered too, that it was about $200,000, but that was from the very beginning of discussing, you know, what we would do with the Green Bridge.
Right. Are we answered at all, or do we want to go back in the circle again?
We're good, as far as I'm concerned.
I was just looking at the timeline. Has the Historic Preservation Commission looked at this?
They have, and they've recommended that we don't delist it.
Yes, they unanimously voted against delisting it.
It wasn't in the documents, though, it's no surprise.
No. I don't know that I, I didn't put it in there, I was assuming, I was hoping to have minutes, I don't know if we did have minutes. We were going to provide the minutes, and I didn't, we didn't have those. I brought it up during, during budgeting, budget meetings, I know that, I told you. I wasn't trying to keep that from the council.
Time for roll call vote, please.
Okay, Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
No.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Resolution 19-51 directing city staff to take whatever necessary steps to remove the Third Street Bridge from the National Historic Register, approved 5-1. Resolution 19-52, a resolution authorizing eminent domain for the acquisition of certain real property for the Waverly Airport Safety Zone Expansion Project. We're to entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-52 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion.
At the what?
Resolution concerns of eminent domain for the acquisition of the Schmidt real property for the Waverly Airport Safety Zone.
I appreciated the timeline. In there, the communications, it looks like it's gone on for several years and been negligent by city staff to try to negotiate and make.
Have a motion.
Appropriate offers.
Yes. Okay. Council discussion, any further?
Yes, I mean, I know we need to get the expansion done, the safety zone done, and I'm supportive of that project in the long run. I just have long held that I don't believe the use of eminent domain to take a home that people are living in is appropriate, and so that's where I'm coming down on this. It's just, I think we've moved the ball along, and there's a lot there, I just, I really hope that a resolution can come to this before eminent domain kicks in.
I think it's always our choice, too. It's not something we wanted to do necessarily. We even went to try and get a variance of just property without the buildings, and that was not wanted by the other party, so this is what we're left with trying to accomplish this.
Yeah, I think that's a clear thing to restate is, the initial ask was just for a strip and removal of some trees. It wasn't affecting the homestead.
It's just an easy.
They have elected to go down that by not accepting earlier offers just to, so it, yeah, there's reasons why we shouldn't take property, but when the homeowner elects to make that the only solution, I guess we're, they're kind of forcing us into that based on their inability to work with us on a different approach.
So I guess I have one question, since our, so one offer was just to take a strip of the property, now we'll have the whole property, what happens to the entire property then?
Well, they have to make decisions about that in the future. We, you know, if we take, if we're going to get the property, we'll probably clear the buildings and the, and the trees, because the buildings are partially on the strip, and so it'd make more sense. What we do with the rest of the property, it becomes, you know, a good part of that's going to become the perimeter around, part of the perimeter, and beyond that, there's some, there's a detention pond that is on that property, which actually provides for some assistance in controlling runoff from the properties to the north, and so there's some reasons to keep it and maintain it in that fashion.
Well, I obviously don't understand the complexities of this. Why can't we just use eminent domain for the originally desired strip that we wanted and leave the rest of it alone?
The FAA doesn't want us to do it that way. If we have to acquire anything by eminent domain, they want us to acquire the whole property.
We're not allowed to do that, or we certainly would have just done that partial part of it.
That seems odd to me, that they would have that rule.
Keep in mind the buildings, some, some of the buildings are in the zone that they wish us to acquire, and I think it would have been different had the buildings been north and we were just trying to get an easement on land.
Okay.
That didn't involve the buildings.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Cangis?
No.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
Resolution 19-52, authorizing eminent domain for the Schmidt real property for the Waverly Airport Safety Zone Expansion, approved 5-1. Resolution 19-53, a resolution authorizing contract with Simmons, Perrine, Moir, and Bergen PLC for legal services for eminent domain proceedings for the acquisition of certain real property for the Waverly Airport Safety Zone Expansion Project. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 1953, authorizing contract with Simmons, Perrine, Moir, and Bergman PLC for legal services for eminent domain proceedings for the acquisition of the Schmidt real property for the Waverly Airport Safety Zone Expansion Project for an hourly fee of $300 per hour for services rendered by attorneys, $130 per hour for time devoted to this matter by paralegals, and will bid for litigation expenses as incurred.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion.
And just to clarify on this contract, what we would generally do is we will set up the condemnation, we'll file the paperwork, we'll get the date set, we'll acquire all the preparatory things that will happen in the next couple of months, and we will only use a law firm if we have to go to the hearing or go to the proceeding. In the next couple of months, while we're waiting for that to get to that date, we will continue to negotiate and hopefully have a resolution before that.
Very good. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
Resolution 19-53, authorizing the contract with Simmons, Perrine, Moir, and Bergen for legal services carried 6-0. Resolution 19-54, resolution approving the well number five inspection and repair estimate. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-54, approving the well number five inspection and repair estimate from Northway Well and Pump Company of Marion, Iowa, for the approximate cost of $16,100.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion.
Just from my own curiosity, where is well number five?
It's by the High School Administration Office on 16th Street and 4th Avenue.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Resolution 1954, approving well number five inspection and repair estimate, approved 6-0. Resolution 19-55, a resolution approving the contract for Phase 3 of the South Riverside Park Project. Entertain a motion.
Move approval of Resolution 1955, approving contract with AHTS Architecture of Waterloo, Iowa, for Phase 3 of the South Riverside Park Project, produce plans and specifications for the estimated cost of $22,750.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion.
Just by way of an update, there have been some discussions with the fire department on their plans.
Nothing recently. I know they're aware of council's wishes to have the tower go on some other location, but we've not had much of a discussion as to where that might be at this point in time.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to this, Tab?
We budgeted this for the next fiscal year, and we are going to do Phase 3 rather than Phase 2 because of the work going to happen on the Bremmer Avenue Bridge.
Because what?
The work that's going to happen on the Bremmer Avenue Bridge probably interfere with the Phase 2 improvements.
Because Phase 2 is taking the trails down to the river, and when the bridge goes in, we'll have to actually access that and probably destroy part of what we will accomplish, so we're going to stay up top and go with the building structure instead, and then switch that off once that project's finished.
Could you remind us, the main components of Phase 3 is the shelter part? Is there anything else in addition?
Correct. There's some improvement in the whole landscaping, that sort of thing, too. It'll make the place look a lot better, but most of it's the shelter.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Resolution 1955, approving contract for Phase 3 of South Riverside Park Project is approved 6-0. Resolution 19-56, a resolution awarding the sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation 2019 project.
I will move approval of Resolution 1956, awarding the sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation 2019 project to Josh's Construction of Dubuque, Iowa, for the bid amount of $18,074.30.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Resolution 1956, awarding sanitary sewer manhole rehab project is approved 6-0. Resolution 19-57, resolution awarding the Dog Park Sidewalk 2019 project to Feldman Concrete of Dyersville, Iowa, for the bid amount of $29,129, and authorizing the city attorney to review and approve the performance and payment bonds. Second. Motion made in second. Council discussion.
I just think this is very nice. It's funded by a private donor, and that's a really generous gesture of that person.
Yep.
Hopefully he'll be able to come and cut the ribbon when it's paved.
Roll call vote, please.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Resolution 1958, awarding the Dog Park Sidewalk Project is approved 6-0. Resolution 19-58, a resolution, resolution awarding the crack cleaning and filling project 2019. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 1958, awarding the crack cleaning and filling project 2019 to Kluznar Construction, Inc. of Farley, Iowa, for the bid amount of $11,185.73.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion.
Mike, does this follow the district model, too, or is this spread out throughout the city?
This is a little more spread out. This is on 12th Street northwest from Bremer to 5th, and then 5th from 1st Street to 12th Street on 5th Avenue northwest, and then up in, I believe it's then Powell subdivision south of Murphy's.
Do you just choose the areas that are the worst off, is it?
Yep. Probably every other year, we kind of look at citywide, where do we think it may add some value in extending the life of the pavement.
Okay, any other discussion, questions? Roll call vote.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rathy?
Yes.
Resolution 1959, awarding citywide asphalt patching 2019 project approved 6-0. Resolution 19-60, a resolution approving contract bounds and certificate of insurance from K Cunningham Construction Company for the Cedar Lane Reconstruction 2019 project, and authorizing the mayor to sign said contract. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 1960, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Rathy?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Resolution 1960, approving the contract for Cedar Lane Reconstruction is approved.
Third and final reading of ordinance 1056, an ordinance providing for rezoning of property owned by Ernest and Teresa Mullis and Jason and Jade Mullis located at 1009 Bremer Road from A1 Agricultural to R1 Single Family Residential. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of, let's see, I'll move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1056, an ordinance providing for rezoning of property owned by Ernest and Teresa Mullis and Jason and.
Jade.
Jade, thank you, Mullis located at 1009 Bremer Road from A1 to R1.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
and Teresa Mullis and Jason and Jade, thank you, Mullis located at one oh oh nine Bremer Road from A1 to R1.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance ten fifty-seven, an ordinance amending the water rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal years two thousand nineteen, twenty, and two thousand twenty, twenty-one, setting a public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I would move the second reading of ordinance ten fifty-seven, an ordinance amending the water rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal years two thousand nineteen, twenty, and two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and setting April first, two thousand nineteen at seven P.M. in the council chambers of City Hall, as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance ten fifty-seven, amending water rates, setting a public hearing is hereby approved. Second reading of ordinance ten fifty-eight, an ordinance amending the sewer rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal years two thousand nineteen, twenty, and two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and setting April first, two thousand nineteen at seven P.M. in the council chambers of City Hall, as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Bergen?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Ordinance, second reading of ordinance ten fifty-eight, amending sewer rates and setting a public hearing is approved. Second reading of ordinance ten fifty-nine, an ordinance amending the solid waste rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal years two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty eight, twenty, twenty-one, amending section sixty-nine point four, sixty-nine point five, and sixty-nine point eight of the Waverly Municipal Code to add language regarding the use of city-supplied recycling containers and setting a public hearing.
I will move the second reading of ordinance one thousand fifty-nine, an ordinance amending the solid waste rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal years two thousand nineteen to twenty and two thousand twenty to twenty-one, amending section sixty-nine point four, sixty-nine point five, and sixty-nine point eight of the Waverly Municipal Code to add language regarding the use of city-supplied recycling containers and setting April first, two thousand nineteen at seven P.M. in the city council chambers of City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion.
Just curiosity, if folks want to meet the rush of getting their city-supplied recycling containers, can they start that now, or do they?
Absolutely, and start now.
Okay. Again, I think the pre-publicity to that has been helpful, and we'll hopefully continue that, but I just didn't know if there was a supply issue.
There is.
First come, first served. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Kengis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance ten fifty-nine, amending solid waste rates, charges, and adding language using city-supplied recycling containers and setting a public hearing is approved. Reports from boards and commissions. Bremer Waverly Law Board minutes, February eleventh, two thousand nineteen, received into record. Leisure Services Commission minutes, February twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, received into record. Senior calendar, March two thousand and nineteen, received into record. Would like to recognize, have the city recognize Yvonne Wooden, who was recently inducted into the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union Girls Basketball Hall of Fame for her stint as coach and player and everything. She's well-known probably more around here now for volleyball, coaching than basketball, but so it was a little bit of surprise, but congratulations, Yvonne, for your induction. Staff comments?
In the Leisure Services Commission minutes, there's some discussion about nicotine areas in the parks, and we'll be talking about that during today's session next week.
All good?
I think it might be all we have, sir.
Okay. City council comments?
I just wondered what would be the best way to discuss Mr., was it Bersh, the first gentleman, who spoke about the golf cart?
Oh, Bersh.
Hirsch. Hirsch, okay, I couldn't acoustically hear it well. But I mean, it's a very, very, very clear and logical argument that he made, and just wondering, Bill looks a little bit.
I always like to get surprised, so when I see people come up and not know what they're saying, I think we need to have a chance to talk about it as staff.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
Study session probably easiest to bring it to you and see if you want to move forward with an actual change to the current.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you could look into it and let us know what you think. And yeah, I mean, just not knowing anything else about it, I thought he made a pretty clear case.
I knew there was some permission granted for fire convention for golf carts, et cetera, but I wasn't sure whether that was citywide or.
Didn't recall that, including the ability to cross Highway Three.
No, it's the rail. We changed, there actually was ordinance or ordinance in the city years ago that forbid the driving of the golf carts on city streets, period, and we changed that since I've been on council two or three times, without the driving on Bremer and stuff.
The fire convention was just north of Bremer.
Yeah.
Again, I thought it was DOT rules to not allow golf carts to cross.
Well, maybe that, if you could just look into it.
I would like the city staff to look into it, let us know definitively, rather than have us hypothesize.
Right, right.
I know the exception is granted to get them to the golf course if they want to travel, and part of it was to keep them off the city streets everywhere, the amount of traffic, so to use that bridge as a bypass, you didn't have all that traffic up and down Cedar Lane.
Yeah, if you could just give us an update.
Sure will.
You could be thankful it's only for golf carts, because there are some communities smaller than Waverly that lawnmowers and ATVs and everything are quote "legal," I believe.
We'll focus on only golf carts.
Don't give anybody any details.
I will be inviting anyone from the community to come and join me for a beer at the por house after the city council meeting. The other thing is, it was mentioned briefly that the Green Mill Ford Bridge, the bridge kind of south of Ingoana's along the Cedar River, came loose on Saturday. I think that reminds us of the importance of maintaining our infrastructure and making plans, specifically on the Green Bridge. I know that if the bicycle rail trail bridge were to come loose, that would be an unmitigated disaster, so at some point, we're going to have to make plans about what we're going to do there. But I think that keeping track of our infrastructure is important, and the high waters that we're experiencing now kind of remind us of that.
But that was a bridge that was no longer.
It was abandoned.
Yeah.
It was not in use.
Yeah, okay.
We could GPS it and make sure we find it later when it's.
Well, to find out, the Third Street Bridge is also not currently in use.
Right, right, right. Correct.
The Green Mill Bridge was built in eighteen, I believe, eighteen seventy, eighteen sixty-eight, if I heard the news right. It was completely closed down in about nineteen eighty-one or eighty-two.
A lot of lines of high water, again, I think the community needs to be reassured, staff is continually monitoring that. Do we have anything based on snow melt up north being anticipated and those types?
We're good. Every indication, we're good for the next, how about, week to ten days.
We'll keep monitoring just in case it changes.
Because it does that now and then.
Yeah, it kind of did on us a little bit. It went just a hair higher, and we thought, but I know it's looking to come down, it could go back, and we're monitoring it, so Mike's in top of it, we're not concerned right now.
So good news is, or no news is good news as far as the public's concerned.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Haugen, do you have any comments you'd like to make for this evening's meeting?
Thank you for great discussion on Champions Ridge and that whole situation. You guys really worked it through and worked it through and were invited, but very necessarily, so thank you for that. I really respect that.
Thank you. The only comments that I would have is keep in mind the people in Western Iowa and Eastern Nebraska with, they're going through what we did in two thousand and eight, and the pictures on the news do not look good at all.
I talked to my son in Glenwood, and he's only got one way in and out of Glenwood. There's three different routes that are blocked, and they're actually going to be bringing people from the Resource Center down there to the Resource Center in Des Moines. So it's big time. They've lost their water treatment plant. I mean, that's just one town. There's other towns clearly underwater, so.
We can very easily sympathize with them. Have you entertained a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
We're adjourned.